Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting to order. Be looking for a motion to approve today's agenda.
Move.
Support.
Move by Bear, supported by Duckham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to item three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir. Please state your name if you would.
Good morning. My name is Casey Porter. I live down in Liberty Township. I'm here to, today, to just address a concern I've had for a number of years since about 2013. So there are a couple people here aware of my concern. Mr. Duckham is one, and Mr. Shotwell, who I'm here at his express invitation today. As apparently this meeting is where this kind of thing would be discussed. Has to do with a section corner that was used for, as a controlling corner for a number of surveys in the township encompassing about two square miles and somewhere around two or dozen property owners and about 660 acres of specific properties that might be involved in a survey that started with a corner that was done incorrectly back in 1992. It was set about 25 and a half feet off and has subsequently been used to perform a number of surveys in the area. And I know this, I worked for the surveyor that did it, which is why I know enough about it to be dangerous, I guess. The concerns I have is that it's finally, apparently, come to the attention of the county. I've heard some circumstances that Mr. Overton might be getting involved. And I know Mr. Duckham knows Mr. Shotwell. And I'm not sure who else wants to know about it, but I'm here to answer questions. I want to be informed about it. I've been kind of left out of the loop and not been made aware of anything going on over the last 10, 12 years. And finally, information's come to light that has allowed me to pursue this a little bit more diligently and directly, which is, again, why I'm here. So if there's any, when this does come up, I'm here to answer questions and to be involved in any way I can to provide information, because I do have very direct and firsthand information and would hopefully be able to get this situation resolved. Are there any questions at this time for me?
Thank you, sir. It's not a question.
Okay.
Sir, Sasha.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any public comment? Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is now closed, takes us to item four A. I'd be looking for a motion to approve last month's committee minutes.
Move.
Move by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to item B, Sheriff's Office, Public Safety Educational Campaign Services. Hello, Sheriff Shutey.
Morning, Commissioners. So I trust you have the packet in front of you. What I wanted to make sure I explained was, in 2022, we ran a campaign, we did it just ourselves, and it was difficult, and it proved that way as the results came in. So what we've done is we put together a package here. Essentially, we sent it out for an RFP with CoPro, we had one response. And we wanted to make sure local vendors received it as well, so we sent it out specifically to local vendors, and then we got another response, which was the local response that you see, which is Taurus Road. The two, excuse me, the biggest difference, I should say, between these are that MRG has extensive experience in these type of educational campaigns, over 40 years, and they've specifically worked on millages in the past with success. And I think that's probably the overriding factor. When I look at Taurus Road and examined all of their qualifications, I have no doubt that they do a really good job marketing for businesses. But I just think this is a little bit different. They're a young company with four years of experience under their belt, where the MRG Group has 40 years of experience. So that was why we recommended it, and I should note too, that CoPro also made that recommendation as well.
Thank you. Committee members, I'd alert you that this is an action item today, this isn't one going to the full board. With that being said, are there any questions for the sheriff? Commissioner Bear.
I think it's a good, good proposal, good idea.
Is your microphone on, Commissioner Bear?
I have no questions, so I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve the sheriff's request for the, to hire MRG as the lead for Public Safety Education Campaign Services for the upcoming Public Safety Millage in August 2024. That's my motion.
I would offer an amendment not to exceed $38,000.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I would add to it not to exceed $38,000, the recommended action.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? You got the support, right? If no discussion, I'd ask you to post a vote, please. Got everybody? Unanimous?
Yep.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Good morning. You too.
One comment, please.
A comment?
Yes.
Okay.
This is when the, within the dollar limit that can be approved at committee.
Correct.
So this is the final approval and does not need to go to the full board. The sheriff can start taking action on this tomorrow.
Yes, Commissioner Barrett, that's what I clarified at the beginning of this item. Thanks. Item C, Youth Center Semiannual Report. Morning, Chuck.
So at the Youth Center, we've been working to reestablish some of the relationships with the community that we lost during COVID. So we've been working with Disability Connections is coming in now to provide some life skills programming for our detention residents. We have the American One Credit Union coming in to provide some financial literacy, including banking, you know, paying taxes, mortgage, interest, you know, those kinds of things. And then we also, we have Next Future Jackson is coming in to do some tutoring with our kids in our treatment program to help out with their educational programming. And then the Jackson District Library is coming in to run a book club for our kids to encourage reading and literacy. The Jackson District Library has also donated a number of books to stock our library at the Youth Center, so they've been really helpful. Some of the staffing issues that we're having at the Youth Center, you may have heard that Integro is closing under the Lifeways umbrella. We had a contract in place for counseling services through Integro. That contract is now transferred over to Lifeways, so those services will continue uninterrupted. We also have a pretty historic retirement coming up later this month. Youth Specialist Dave Eddy is retiring after 36 years of working with delinquent youth, so that's pretty significant and a huge change for our facility as well. And then, of course, we continue to see turnover with our night shift staff, both second and third shift. It's just tough to keep people in those positions because nobody seems to really want to work nights anymore, so they kind of hire in and stay on the night shift long enough to find a job elsewhere where they can work during the day. The solar array installation with Vergey is, was activated actually last week, so we are all powered up and ready to go over there. That went off without a hitch, so that's pretty exciting. Actually, our kids have really gotten excited about solar energy and alternative energy in general, just from looking at it and seeing it out back there, so they've had lots of questions about that. So we're looking at working with Vergey to have them come in to provide some educational opportunities around alternative energy as well. As far as admissions, we had 182 admissions last year. We're seeing definitely a big increase in the length of time that kids are spending with us, so we seem to be seeing fewer kids, but they're staying with us for a longer period of time, and the kids that we do have are more serious offenders, more chronic offenders, and that's increased our average length of stay from about 21 days per kid up to about 40 now. There's just a major statewide lack of available placements, because a lot of these kids are sitting waiting for placement into another facility or a treatment program elsewhere, and there's, a lot of facilities are understaffed and unable to accommodate, so those kids are just sitting for a long period of time waiting. That's all I had for today. Are there any questions?
Committee members, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you again, Chuck. I just had a question for you. I've noticed that we've had quite a bit of a turnover over probably the last, for quite some time now, just on the, on the night shift jobs. Are we, I'm just curious as to how we're marketing those.
Well, currently, we use, obviously, HR posts on BSNA. We use Indeed, as well as Handshake is a new thing that HR has been using. I've reached out to a number of the local universities and their career, you know, enhancement programs, and so we have postings at all of those different universities and colleges around the area. Beyond that, we do try to get to job fairs and things like that, but they don't tend to be very effective, quite honestly.
Is there, do you know if there's, if there's any other practices that we, we can adopt to help to keep people longer in those positions? Because I'm sure there's a community of people that would prefer night shift jobs. I'm just wondering if we're delivering that message appropriately.
If you know where those people are, I'd be glad to meet them. Because, yeah, we just, we just not seeing that.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Any other committee member questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Move by Bear, supported by Duckham. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Chuck. Have a great day. Takes us to item D, Front of the Court Semiannual Report. I believe Sarah is here. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I presented the report. As you can see, numbers are actually starting to stabilize from the downturn that we had from COVID, so I'm happy to see those numbers. Wanted to bring to your attention notably the parenting time enforcement hearings, because that, to me, is a really good marker. So back in 2019, we were not as timely with responding to parenting time complaints from parents. There was a huge backlog. They weren't a dedicated response time, and we worked with our team to talk about what seemed to be an appropriate response time for parenting time complaints. You know, what do we need to get to these? And how to make them a priority, how to get them responded to. And as you can see, we went from parenting time enforcement hearings being 102 back in 2019, down to 29, and that's a direct result of that initiative to respond to the parenting time complaints sooner. When we were responding a lot slower, there was a buildup, there was a breakdown in the relationship between the parents, and it was getting to the point where we were having to go directly to hearings for parents so that they could get access to their kids. And by intercepting and getting involved quickly on those, we were able to reduce the number of parenting time enforcement hearings by resolving the issue sooner with the parents, as opposed to letting it build up and parents going months without having access to their children. So I was really happy, one, that what we thought was the problem actually fixed the problem, and we can see that here. Also, notably, what I wanted to share with you on the last page was our staff at a glance. So we right now have 46% of our staff have been in their position for less than a year. So that's a huge learning curve for a lot of people to overcome. We've had a lot of retirements, a lot of internal promotions, a lot of shifts and movements within our office, as well as a lot of new staff coming in. So we've been working on training plans and onboarding and getting staff up and running and working smoother, quicker, but there's, there's also something to be said about just having experience in the job and being able to be productive in it. So, any questions?
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. On page two of your report, no, I'm sorry, page one, item two, Jackson County Performance Initiatives. Two of the four, you are above the state goal, so that's good. Two of the four, you're under the state goal. What do you, are you doing anything to try to get that performance up to match the state goal?
Yes, absolutely. Those two are the prior, our priority items. The support order percentage, that's the, our current charge, so if someone's charged $500 a month in their child support, and if we're only able to collect, say, $250 a month in the child support for that case, so that means that we're collecting 50% of the current charge. That numerator and denominator to get that percentage is a huge needle that has to be moved in order to move even one or two percentage points. So what we do to try to get there is right-size orders, right-size orders. So we make sure that parties are able to pay the support that is being charged. The problem occurs when people lose their jobs. So if somebody loses their job and they can't pay their support, we're not raking people over the coals right away over that. We're giving them work opportunities, we're allowing them time to find jobs, getting them connected with work first, all of those things. But there may be a couple of months where unemployment is coming in, or they're not able to pay, and we have to determine whether or not it's appropriate to modify their support to go down, or give them the time that they need to actually get a job back in their industry. So it takes a lot of, well, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to communicate is it's not always about the numbers, it's about the people. So sometimes that number pays as a result of being compassionate to the families and the human beings that are behind those numbers. So I'm always making sure that the people are important over top of the numbers.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other committee member questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Move, move by Williams, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, have a great day. That takes us to item E, Animal Shelter First Quarter Report. I know Lydia's here. Good morning, Lydia.
Good morning. How's everybody? You can see as for our report for this quarter, our numbers, our intake numbers, the different kind of animals we've taken in, and our statistics as far as animal control, which is pretty consistent throughout. Animal control stays busy year-round, there's not, there hasn't been so much of a curve of seasons of when it's busy or slow. I do want to, you can notice all of our events, our community engagement events as well, we're still, our calendar's pretty packed. I do want to pay attention to our intake numbers overall. A few years ago, there was a large jump, like they doubled, intake doubled, and at this point, there's not as extreme of a jump, but we are still, year after year, increasing the numbers that are coming into Jackson County Animal Shelter. It's important to note that on our intake numbers, our clinic services are included in that, so that's our community spay and neuter. So when you see on the year-to-year comparison, you can see how many animals came in for spay and neuter from the community, and those are just Jackson County animals that we offer a low-cost service to. One of the ways that we try to keep down the pet population is offering a mama's last litter program, so if someone has an accidental litter, they bring us all the puppies or kittens, and we sterilize mom for a low cost, but then we adopt out all of the offspring and make sure that they are also sterilized. So that kind of just helps keep down the unwanted population for cats and kittens and dogs in the community. I always want to mention, EPM Professional Ground Services had a, a community contest for a donation, and they, the community selected Jackson County Animal Shelter, so we're grateful to them as well. And that's, that's my report, in short. Any questions?
Questions, committee members? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Good morning. So I had a constituent recently reach out to me asking the question, so they noticed on the end of the Channel 6 Noon News, they do like a segment, Ingham County generally will announce, you know, one of their animals that are in their facility there with hopes that someone would adopt. So the question was, does Jackson County submit information there? And if not, could we?
We do not currently, but I can definitely reach out and, and ask about that. We have JTV, and there's a few other, MLive, we have Pet of the Month, or Pet of the Week that goes out every week, and some of those other media channels, but we can definitely look into that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other committee member questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Lydia.
Good morning.
On page six of your PowerPoint there, and seven, six is the cat statistics. You took in 109 strays, 133 owner surrenders, and you add in the euthanasias, you've got 273 explanations of the disposition of these animals. You had 386 intake, so there's a difference of 113 cats. Are there other categories of statistics that you don't include here?
Right. The, on the page with the year-to-year comparison, it shows clinic services, so in our intake numbers there, it also includes the animals that come in for spay and neuter, so they aren't included in an outcome there because they're not actually staying at the shelter, they're just coming in for a clinical procedure. So that's the reason. And there's also, month-to-month, we may have cats in foster, a lot of cats and kittens in foster care, so they're still in our numbers, and they haven't left our care yet. So between clinic services and animals in foster care, there's always going to be a discrepancy, it's not going to line up evenly.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other committee member questions? Commissioner Duckham.
Good morning, Lydia.
Good morning.
I was looking at your 2023 intake. I see you took a coyote in? I mean, yes, you did. What would you do with a coyote? You can't rehome it.
No. We call the DNR. Let them handle that.
And snakes? I didn't know you took in snakes.
We take in pretty much everything.
I did see that.
Yeah. We even have an alligator before, but the snakes usually get adopted really quickly, actually. There's a lot of snake people in Jackson, I guess.
I was just surprised to see some of these animals up there. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
No other questions? I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Move by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Lydia. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too.
Takes us to item F, 911 Dispatch CAD Interface. Hello, Jason.
Good morning, everybody. Back in 2022, we started discussing interface between our CAD and our ambulance CAD system to help better communicate back and forth to our rescue departments and to both dispatch centers. A lot of things have happened back when we first started talking about it. HVA got a new director of their dispatch center that set us back a little bit from the initial conversations. Of course, we have a new IT department that really want to work with us, so getting everybody on board, having the conversations, finally, several meetings have taken place. Again, like I said, this is something that is going to help each agency, each dispatch center, each rescue department, and each ambulance have the communication they need to make a better, better decision. When initially talked, I think it was about $100,000, we talked about interface, now it's about $40,000. Interface has kind of been built by Tyler already, so gave us a huge discount. There is a recurring cost every year that would go on to my maintenance that I pay every year, which is about 20, a little bit over $2,500. Both IT and myself are on board, moving this to the board, so if you guys have any...
Any questions, committee members? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval. Move by Duckham. All support.
Discussion?
Discussion. Go ahead, Commissioner Bear.
This committee can approve up to $75,000 without going to the full board. This is only a $40,000 request.
It's over the, it's the length of the contract.
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
It's the length of the contract, it's over three years, which requires full board action. Multiple years. Multiple years requires full board approval.
If it's more than a year, it requires full board approval.
Correct. According to the administrator.
That's disappointing.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'd like you to place the vote, please. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a good day.
I'll get the amended contract up.
All right. Takes us to item G, Airport Advanced Air Mobility Infrastructure Development. Takes us to item G, Airport Advanced Air Mobility Infrastructure Development. Good morning, Juan.
Good morning, Commissioner Kennedy. So this is a request for a resolution supporting the advanced air mobility development at the airport. There's a grant application that's due tomorrow, going into Senator Peters' office, and this is for the projects that can help communities. The advanced air mobility is basically the, the new type of aviation that's going to be coming throughout the planet, including the United States. And this includes not, not only the vertical takeoff and landing type of aircraft, but also the drone type of aircraft, the, the OMAN aircraft. So the proposal is to develop on the west side of the airport, an area that will include a, a landing area for this type of aircraft called VertiPort. It will also include the utilities that are necessary to support this kind of aircraft. That will be, initially will be the electric power so we can fast charge the, this type of aircraft. And also, we're going to need storage facilities or hangars in the area. So this is the first step in the process, which will require a resolution from the county board in support of this project. I have also requested support from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, as well as MDA, Office of Air and Attics.
Is there any questions? Commissioner Baer?
Good morning, Juan.
Good morning, sir.
I like your presentation. I like the resolution. I only have one question. If the deadline for the application is tomorrow, why is that only coming to us today? If something, let's just say there was a power failure and this meeting was canceled. Well, then you're screwed. You can't get your application in.
Yes, sir. Yes.
What transpired that it's only a one-day notice?
So the, the application came to me a week ago Friday, and in the process of developing the application, it was discovered that we needed a lot of letters of support. So I went ahead and I proposed to the county, to the county administrator, as well as the chairman of the county board, that, to see if we're going to be able to have support on this resolution, which starts a short notice. This, this resolution bypassed the airport board. We didn't even know about this application opportunity until just about a week and a half ago. So the timing was just very tight. Having said that, the application deadline has been moved from March 12th to March 19th. So we do have another week, if we want to think about it. But that, that was the reason for the short deadline. And it was just one of those things that we, we didn't get the email from the Senator Peters' office until just about seven days ago, eight days ago, and we just didn't have the time.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Administrator Overton.
Quick question, Juan. You said they moved the deadline to the 19th. So you have to submit on the 19th?
Correct.
So since we have a board meeting on the 19th, we could approve it on the 19th?
Yes.
But you would have to have sent it before we approved it?
Correct.
Because it's usually five o'clock. Right.
Five, yeah.
So, so with that said, you know, I'm not, I'm, if the board here is in agreement, we can do that. And then, but just know that you have, really don't eat, don't have a whole lot of choice on the 19th but to approve it, given that we're going ahead and committing and sending it. So, you know, it's not, but we don't make the rules and they give us...
I can clarify. So, so the application has to be, has to be submitted by the 19th?
Yeah.
But then the, the letters of support can be submitted shortly after that. So, so we don't necessarily, we can probably wait until the full board for approval of this letter of support. So the application itself has to be submitted, but then there's the opportunity to submit all the letters of support.
Okay. So now I understand a little better.
Yeah.
So we can go ahead and send in the application. This here resolution of support can be done on the 19th?
Yes.
And sent in after, along with the other letters of support from other community organizations?
Correct. And by submitting the application, it does not mean that we're committing to anything.
Right.
However, the fact that they extended the deadline gives me the indication that they don't have a lot of applications for anything yet.
They, they realize they messed up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'd be looking, excuse me, Commissioner Williams?
Sir, just for clarification. So in the event that we move forward and submit the application but wait for the, the letters to follow, would we run the risk of possibly missing it by not sending them all at the same time?
No. So my understanding is the application can go in and the letters of resolution can accompany it thereafter.
So they, historically, is that how we normally do it? Or do we send them all at the same time?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Be looking for a motion to forward this to the full board with recommendation of approval. Okay. Motion by Baer, supported by Williams. I'll have you post the vote, please. Any discussion? Okay. Passes unanimously. That takes us to item H, Airport Terminal Improvements Contract Design.
Thank you. This is a request to approve the contract with the consultant, Mead and Hunt, for the design portion of the project, for the terminal update project. As a reminder, the, this type of project through the Airport Capital Improvement Program comes in several phases. Phase one, in this instance, was a study to determine what parts of the building can be included as part of this project. That study was approved back in August of 2023 in the amount of $42,154. That part of the project is 100% reimbursable. This next segment of the project is for designing the actual, the, the sign of the terminal building. So, so this will actually show what is actually going to be done during this project. It's a, in the amount of $258,190, and 89% of this amount is reimbursable under the ARP. So, so we'll have to put up the funds, the funds upfront, but we'll be refunded $229,789.10. And then if we do follow through this project and we submit the application to the FAA, then at that point, we're committing to the project, the $2 million grant, and that has to be done by July 1 of 2024, as of right now. I have requested an extension on that application because, as of right now, mid-March, we need to design the project. We need to put it out for bids, get the bids back, select a contractor, and then submit the application to the FAA. And then the FAA has to turn around and approve that prior to July 1. So that's a pretty tight deadline. And so we've requested that that can be, if that can be extended, to be extended by. For today, we're requesting the, the contract for designing the actual project.
Commissioner Duckham has a question.
I'd like to make a motion to send us to the full board, but a question for Juan. I realize why you're always in a bind. It's always FAA, the feds. Don't they have a schedule? I mean, we're always on theirs.
Yes, sir. So, so the, this, and this, so we became aware that we had a earmark from Congressman Walberg in January of 2023. It's, it took us some time to get the, the study completed. The consultant completed the study in October of 2023. It took until, and I think I have the date right here, February 29th for MDA to approve the study. So it's one of those situations that it kept going back and forth. If you may recall from some of the meetings we've had in the past, so on this $2 million grant, anything that is not used for the general public for aviation purposes is not eligible to be included in this grant. And then that will be 100% local expense. Things like if we were to update items in the kitchen in the restaurant, that'll be 100% local. So, so the big issue with the FAA and MDA is that the roof of the building, as well as the windows of the building, they cover segments of the restaurant, which is not available to the general public that's flying in and out. And so they were not going to pay for that. And so we had gone from an expectation of about 91% coverage of the project to 72%. And so that's why we really argued, and we had to argue not only with MDA, but with the FAA to figure out, can we make this work? Because at 72%, we're looking at about an $800,000 local share on a $2 million project. So we were able to get that up to 89%, and, and that's where the local share comes in. But unfortunately, because it's a congressional earmark, the deadline is much tighter than if it was under the typical ACIP program, which gives us several years for something like that. What it comes down to is congressmen have to go for reelection every two years, and they want to be able to show their constituents what are they doing to the community. So, so this is why.
Yeah, I, I knew what your answer was going to be. I just wanted the rest of the commissioners to hear about it, because when you bring this to us with a week or two notice, it's not because you're out there sitting around doing nothing. And I know that from sitting on the airport board. So now the rest of the commissioners would know what you have to jump through the hoops, and you're just not in contangious, I guess. Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
So you, you offered a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, one second. The support came from Williams first. So we have a motion by Duckham, supported by Commissioner Williams, and go ahead, Commissioner Baer.
Is this contract between the airport and Mead and Hunt, or is it between the County of Jackson and Mead and Hunt?
It's between the owner of the airport and Mead and Hunt. So yes, the county.
So if you're the signature to the, to this contract, because it's between, the contract between the airport and Mead and Hunt, then what are you asking us for? If the contract doesn't, isn't signed by the county?
No, the, the contract is actually signed by Chairman Shawwell.
Okay. So the, if the contract, then if our Chairman Shawwell has to sign it, to me, that says the contract is between the county and Mead and Hunt.
That is correct.
If the contract is between the county and Mead and Hunt, I guess on the first page of your contract where it says, address is 3606 Wildwood Avenue, I would like that changed to 120 West Michigan Avenue. That's the address for the county. So if you need a county signature, I would like to see a county address on the contract.
That is the county address, correct, Juan?
So the, the County of Jackson owns the Jackson County Airport. The, all of the aid that the airport receives from the federal government are sent to the Jackson County Airport at the address of the airport. And so the, the County of Jackson being the owner for the airport, they, they're required to sign the contracts, but the, the actual contract is between Jackson County Airport and either the FAA or Mead and Hunt. And the reason this contract is between Mead and Hunt and the Jackson County Airport, but the, the County of Jackson has to sign for it, is because we're, we're going to go ahead and turn this around and request to be reimbursed for this amount. So I guess to answer your question is, all of the documents for the Jackson County Airport show the airport address as the, as the address, the legal address for all contracts. And I can, I can try and see if it could be changed to 120 West Michigan Avenue, but I'm not sure if the FAA will go for that. So historically, going back to...
Not only that, it would just slow us down. It's, it's, you know, why create additional bureaucracy? We have no mailing, mail slot for the airport in the tower building here. I mean, if you want to call tower, they're our primary address. But the county has numerous addresses all across the county with different buildings that we own. I would much rather see documentation that's going to the airport and Juan, go to Juan as opposed to come here, then everybody's looking and going airport. Well, we got to take this to the airport, and then I got to figure a way to get it to the airport. So someone's driving out there. No, it's not, not the way to go.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Baer?
The contract for 911 Dispatch doesn't contain the address where 911 Dispatch is located. It contains the address of Jackson County. So it still makes no sense to me that the county authorizes this, but we don't use the county address. I'll support it, but I just, I just have a problem with that. If we ever end up in court over a problem, this is going to work against the county.
Okay, thank you. Please post the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Juan, for your work. We appreciate it. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to Congressman Walberg and his staff. We, we appreciate him looking out for Jackson County. And you have your semi-annual report.
Yes, sir. So the first page of the report, we can look at the airport operations. I wanted to do this just to kind of, so you guys can see the trend of operations at the airport. And keeping in mind that the height of the operations for the airport were back in 2016, where we had over 44,000 operations annually. And then in 2017 is when they were doing the runway 725 construction and demolition of runway 624. So our operations took a little bit of a hit. Back in 2018, we started building back up the operations. And then COVID hit in 2020, so we took a 39% decrease in operations. That was recovered slightly in 2021, but they didn't really start recovering until 2022. And along with COVID in 2020, that's also when the Jack, Jackson College Flight Program, which at one time used to be the, the premier junior college flight program in the country, shut down permanently. So we were without a flight school and, and COVID. And so that really caused us to take a big hit. But since then, our operations have been recovering. And in 2023, we had a new flight school that opened up in January of '23, and then our operations for '23 ended just shy of 35,000 operations. We're always wanting to have more operations, obviously, primarily because the, the tower, the control tower, the controllers, right now, we don't pay any, any funds, any local funds to have the tower there. But if the operations drop too much, then we will end up having to pay somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $80,000 just to have the controllers at the airport. So that was always good. In the next page, I wanted to show the latest report card from MDA on the airport. And this just basically shows that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're maintaining our pavements. We're maintaining our pavement markings. We're maintaining compliance with the grant assurances. So we're not giving individuals any monopoly over the airport or anything like that. So this is kind of critical, obviously, because MDA controls the federal funds that we get at the airport, and we want to keep getting those funds so we can continue to develop the airport. The following page is the, the latest community, community benefit assessment for the airport. And this basically shows that we had the 34,000 operations, our based aircraft are 95, and that we received about $3.5 million in funding from the feds and $35,000 from the state for 2023. Those $3.5 million include the, the part of the project that's been, that's ongoing right now in the control tower building, which if you can see in the next page. So this community benefit assessment takes into account how many jobs are created by having the airport here in Jackson, and, and what kind of benefit is that producing. So with all the businesses that local, are based at the airport but also benefit from the airport, the calculation was made that we, we have a benefit of about $67.5 million on an annual basis. And that number continues to grow as we get more people involved in the airport, and more businesses are using the airport for their own benefit. And then lastly, I just wanted to show in the, the airport projects for 2024. Like I mentioned before, we have the control tower building update, which is underway, and that was a $4.7 million project. The terminal building update, that's still in the design phase, and hopefully that's going to be approved later this year. Then we have tax-away Bravo rehabilitation, which includes the replacement of pavement, as well as lights and signs. And that's a nearly $700,000 project that will be completed in the fall of 2023. that will be completed in the fall of 2024. Then there's the two ARPA projects, the Airport Water Main and Stormwater Improvements Project, which is happening spring and summer of 2024, just over nine-hundred thousand dollars. And the Eastside Hangar Taxi Lane repaving, which will be starting here in about a month at a cost of two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. The next page just talks about the air mobility. And once again, this is really critical for the future of the airport. We're one of the few airports, the only airport in Michigan right now that's trying to capture this type of market. Battle Creek is dealing primarily with the military, part of the advanced air mobility and the drone market. They do a lot of the military drone operations over there. But we're mostly interested in companies. We have a letter of agreement from a company in Italy that wants to come to Jackson and get their multimillion-dollar drone approved. And this will be a drone that will basically take the packages, as an example, from FedEx aircraft and land them, bring it down to Jackson. And then from Jackson, they will put them in trucks to be delivered locally. And the last page of the project is the local company, Suffer Systems. They're managing the test range that, right now, only includes from Livingston County down to Hillsdale. And it takes a notch out of the Jackson area because we're a Class Delta or controlled airspace airport. But sometime before the end of the month, we're expecting this next section to be approved, which will be from Jackson all the way to Battle Creek. And so this is where we're getting a lot of looks from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. This is the biggest test range, and actually, the only test range in Michigan right now for testing this type of aircraft. So if we can capture some of the dollars from the state as well as from the feds, we can see several companies that will be basing out of Jackson to develop this type of aircraft. This is one of the areas where the United States is slightly behind the rest of the world. China has already approved the EV type of aircraft for passenger service. And we expect that in the summer of this year, at the Paris Olympics, they'll be using air taxis as well there. So we're working with the FAA to try and get things moving quicker.
Commissioner Duckham.
Juan, are we just delivering like FedEx packages type things? I mean, we're not delivering bulky items, are we? What type items are these drones going to deliver?
So obviously, in the future, you're going to see the drones delivering everything from your prescription drugs to your groceries to any kind of packages that you want. And that's the holdup right now in the United States is the FAA is trying to design the airspace where the drones will operate, and they will not conflict with the aircraft that are already flying. But that's something that's, it's already happening in the United States in cash spaces, where I believe it's in South Carolina, they're delivering groceries, and you can, like, right now, you can order DoorDash, where you can order AirDash in segments of South Carolina. And they, basically, the drone flies about two-hundred-fifty, three-hundred feet above the ground, and they deliver the package via a line attached to a package that releases on your home, right next to your home.
Kind of amazing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other committee member questions? If none, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Baer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you for your support.
That takes us to item J, Jackson County Department of Transportation Material Testing. Charlie is filling in today, huh?
Morning, everybody. Charlie Breiner, Director of Engineering with the Jackson County DOT. First, I'm just going to go over the material testing and environmental services that we are bringing forth. We are asking to... Yep, it's on. So we're bringing to you guys the material testing and environmental services for two years with SME, and it's not to exceed six-hundred thousand dollars per year. And this is going to be for a multi-year, multi-year program. The service is to provide lab and field testing and ensure the quality of materials provided by the action vendors to meet specifications. We did have five vendors that provided responses to the proposal. We are recommending to go with SME by reviewing all the line items that they provided to us, and we selected them based off of which line items we use at most times.
Committee members, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. So one other question is just, again, just regarding the finance. This is coming out of JDOT's budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman. Professionally, I've worked with SMEs many contracts. They're very good. I have a question with what's presented in their, in the scope of work. Talks about providing environmental services and material testing. Professional services include staffing is needed to perform those duties, regularly associated with materials testing on the roads, bridges. Looking through everything here, nothing says that after they perform a test, that they're going to write and give us a report, letting us know the results of the test. And yes, I assume they're going to do that. But the words that they're going to write a report, issue it to us with a recommendation of how to proceed, those words are not in this contract anywhere. So how are we going to expect them to provide the follow-up reports? If it's not even in here?
So when we send this out to bid, we send it in with a request for proposals. So the proposal breaks down what we're requiring or what we're requesting. And usually, it does break down the specifications on all that material, how it needs to be tested, and using the MDOT forms that are provided.
I read the proposal that was provided here. It does not mention providing a report.
Well, majority of these firms that we received responses from, that's part of their breakdown of services that they provide to us is breakdown of a report of all the testing that they do.
Part of a breakdown? Would you refer me to the proper page where I have missed that?
It wouldn't be in this document right here. It would... Sorry, what was that again?
Because when you go to the document Materials Testing and Environmental Services, the contract obligations, that spreadsheet does not have report preparation shown anywhere.
Yep, but the breakdown that we provided was a table that we assembled ourselves. So the actual responses that we received from each consultant is a multi-page document. So if that's something that you wish to see, that's something we can definitely provide to you guys, if that's something you guys would like to have.
Okay, you're saying that's somewhere in that document. Talks about reports.
Not in this specific document right here.
I couldn't hear that.
Not in this specific document right here. It does break down the actual reports.
What document says that they're actually going to give us a report?
I guess I'll have to look into that.
Because if it's not in the request for proposal, and I didn't find it.
Yep.
And it may be in their contract, but you have not provided us a copy of that contract for us to review.
Administrator Overton.
I guess, if I may, Mr. Commissioner Baer, I guess I don't quite understand the question. Is the question, do you believe that we're going to sign a contract of, like you said, a very reputable engineering firm, and they're going to do the work, and we're going to pay them, and they won't give us a report? Won't give us the report that they did? Is that what you believe?
No. What I do believe is that the documents presented to us never mention them providing a report. Yes, I think SME is very professional. I've received many reports from them. If it's in the contract that they provide us reports, then in the future, please submit a copy of that contract.
I'm confident it's in the contract, and I'm confident, even if it wasn't in the contract, that they would do it.
Yeah.
I mean, they wouldn't, couldn't stay in business that way. Where we're going to do the work, you're going to pay us, but we're not going to give you anything. They're not that kind of firm.
It's just not complete, it's not thorough.
Okay, well, we can make sure that in the future, we include that information. We've been using them for about ten years for all of our testing needs for JC DOT SME.
Thank you. I'd be looking for a motion. Moved by Williams, supported by Duckham. Any discussion? Please post a vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item K, concrete work.
All right, for our next one, for concrete work, we're asking to approve the award of the contract to Caesar's Building and Remodeling for one year with the possible one-year extension to not exceed one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. As part of road improvement projects, it is necessary for concrete work. This work includes driveway approaches, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and other miscellaneous items that need to be addressed as part of the project. We did receive three responses for bids, and it is recommended that we award this to Caesar's Building and Remodeling. This would be the first time we would be going with this firm.
Committee members, are there any questions? If not, I have one. Were local companies, was this project too big? I don't see any Jackson.
I think it was a combination of multiple factors. A lot of times when we come up to issues with concrete, we were looking for immediate response to try to address these things. And I think a lot of the local vendors, I think they were, they're having a hard time trying to schedule things for us, so I think I might have tiered some of them.
All right, thanks. Any other questions from committee members? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board. Moved by Duckham, supported by Baer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. That'll take us to item L, asphalt millings pile crushing screening.
All right, so we're asking for award of the contract for asphalt millings, so the crush pile and screening at the Jackson DOT garage to the Thompson Recycle Company, and not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. We would like to test a few roads during the 2024 chip seal program using three-eights recycled stone as seen to perform durability. We did receive three contractors to bid on the project. We're asking to have this approved during this committee meeting to move forward with this.
Yep, so to be clear, like he said, this is an action item today. It won't require a full board approval. So I'd be looking for a motion for approval. Moved by Duckham, supported by Baer. And if you would post a vote, please. Thank you. Passes unanimously, takes us to item N, MHMA surfacing.
All right, for the 2024 HMA surfacing, we are requesting to authorize the award of a 2024 HMA surface contract to Reith Riley Construction at a cost of two-million-four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars and seventy-eight dollars. The HMA surface is consist of ten-point-seven miles of roads throughout the Blackman Township. And we provided a table of all of these roads that we are looking at paving along with their lengths. JC DOT is asking for the approval to move forward with Reith Riley Construction on the paving portion of the project.
Committee members, are there any questions? You didn't, no? If not, I would be looking for a motion forward to the full board. Motion by Duckham, supported by Baer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item N, Act Fifty-One Certification.
All right, so for the Act Fifty-One Certification, we're asking for the chairman of the Jackson County Board to sign the two cover sheets for the 2023 Act Fifty-One Road Cert Book. This information contains all of the road changes or classifications in our network. And we have a line, a line out of all of the different roads that are being addressed in the cert book.
Any questions, committee members? Not, be looking for a motion to forward it to the full board. Moved by Williams, supported by Baer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. And that takes us to item O, the monthly report.
All right, for our report, we have been doing some tree work on a few of our projects. Specifically, we have been doing Deering and Jefferson Road. And then we have also moved over to the Springport and Minor intersection, where we're going to be proposing that, or we're going to be constructing the new roundabout. We're actually going to be meeting the contractor in a few weeks to go over the actual roundabout project. And then we also have been doing tree removal as part of the non-motorized trail from Monroe Street to Cooper Street. The reason for doing this tree removal at this time is that there are environmental restrictions to have all this tree work done prior to April fifteenth. And for maintenance, we have been having our crews out patching around the county. We are now down to twelve open queue alerts for potholes, and we're going to continue addressing these potholes as needed. And then for deburming, we are deburming in areas that improve drainage for the roadway. We will be working also in Blackman Township to get ready for some of those projects as well. And then grading our gravel roads, we have one queue alert remaining for the gravel roads, and we are starting to spot gravel, some areas that are in need of these gravel repairs as well. And that is all I have at this moment.
I am going to ask a question for Commissioner Snell, since he's not on this committee, but are we anticipating on finishing up Blackman this year? Or is it going to delay further?
We're still proposing to finish up in 2025 for Blackman Township.
Twenty twenty-five. Okay, thank you very much. I've just had some people asking those questions. Commissioner Baer.
Thank you. On your slide here for tree work, some of your tree work is done for parks, non-motorized trails. So the cost for the machinery, the manpower, to do the parks work, it's your people, correct?
It's our contractor. We don't have our own crews. We have a contractor doing the tree work. Now, we do have some labor and equipment assisting in that tree removal, but it's primarily getting charged to the Parks Department.
That gets back charged to the parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other committee member questions? If not, Commissioner Polesky had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the courtesy. I appreciate it very much. With respect to the Blackman Township, the hot mess asphalt that we just talked about, I mean, of that amount, seventy percent is being paid by the local unit of government. And have they already approved to pay that amount? Or are they obligated to pay whatever we spend? What's the process there?
This is going to be one-hundred percent our cost. It was agreed prior to that the seventy percent match was going to be one-hundred percent paid by Blackman Township until seventy percent of the project was completed. So we've already paid, township has already paid their seventy percent on the project. So we're now on the last portions of the project where we're paying one-hundred percent on our end. So we're paying the remaining thirty percent of the project. And that was set years before.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking about how it is that we, I mean, we partner with local units of government. We spend money, and we need to make sure we, we and the locals have the discipline to work within budgets. That's kind of the genesis of my question.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't understand fully on how that whole setup was originally for the first couple of years, but we're now in the tail end, we're going to be paying that last thirty percent. So the agreement between JC DOT and the board and Blackman Township, I don't have those details at the... have those details at the, at the moment, but that's, that's essentially how that program was set up.
Yes. If there's no other questions, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thanks.
Item 5A, I'd be looking for a motion to pay the claims.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item E, B, Other Minutes. I see none. Item C, Reporting Schedule. Mine's not pulling up.
JDOT District Court, Circuit Court.
Jackson County Department of Transportation District Court and Circuit Court are scheduled for next month. Takes us to item six. It's the second opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, public comments closed. Takes us to item seven, committee member comments. Are there any committee member comments? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. We approved seven contracts during this meeting. The airport, uh, Advanced Air Mobility Infrastructure Development Contract was the only contract that was actually provided to us to look at. So, I voted to approve six contracts today that I never even got to see the contract. I would like that to change. Anytime a contract comes to us, or we are asked to approve a contract, I wanna see it. I'll have to think about this a little bit, but I may just start voting no on every contract request that I don't, actually am not given an opportunity to see the contract. If I can't see it, then I don't, don't know what I'm actually approving. So, I ask for that change. Start, please start including these contracts in the board docs so I may review them.
Any other commis- uh, committee member comment? Seeing none, meeting's adjourned.